Okay, well hello everyone, hello North Anniver School Committee. This is a special edition of Civics in Action. Normally Civics in Action are with civic actors such as politicians and activists. I'm very happy to report today that I think this is going to be the most valuable Civics in Action episode. And that is with civics students. To borrow from a Star Wars line or from a classic line somewhere that I heard. The students become the master. What I've seen from these students and from all my students has been amazing. Just for the record, school committee, it's Thursday, May 20th, 2020. We are here at the school committee meeting. Dr. Gilligan and the school committee have asked me to present on year one of the AP Civics pilot. We are in the first year of the Civics pilot working with the new civic standards and working with Harvard University and the Democratic Knowledge Project. Just a little background, school committee. The students and I started this journey together in late August of 2019. And that went until Friday the 13th with live lessons. And then from then till now, we have done remote learning with the Civics pilot. In that August to March timeframe, we did a lot. I'll give you a report about that. We did three curriculum units together, an identity unit, a creating the Constitution unit. And then at the end, the philosophical foundations and rights, which unfortunately we got kind of cut out of. One of the students is coming in. If she could just mute herself and I will be calling on her momentarily. There was also a video game that we explored. A few of the students in this group took a trip to Harvard University, to Harvard Law School with me. And Harvard Law students actually came to us, which was amazing. And so much more and so much more. So the questions that all the students are going to be answering are uniform, they are the same. Just for the record, I know I only have 25 minutes. So members of the school committee and Dr. Gilligan, if obviously I go beyond my time. You can just show the rest of the video and you know, we can put it on North Anniver Cam or whatever. I know you have a lot of things on the agenda tonight, we don't want to take all the time. So the five questions that I'll be asking all the civic students where we're reflecting on the year. Is what did you know about civics prior to this year? What do you know now? What have you learned? What was your favorite thing in the past year and why? Virtually, how are things going? All 14 of these students have been successful on remote learning. I want them to tell me why. Year two, obviously they're all going on to bigger and better things next year. There will be a new group of students, whether it's live or virtual. I want them to tell me what they see for the future of the civics program. And where do they see the civics program in five years? They'll be in college at that point, but where would they like to see it? And then of course, I'd like some reflection on tweaks, suggestions, improvements for it. So I think we're good. I think we're all ready and we're going to begin with the first student. Don't worry, you don't have to swear on a Bible or anything like that. This is all very, very informal. So Gabe, you can unmute yourself. Gabe, are you there?
Yes, sir.
So Gabe, could you please introduce yourself to the school committee?
My name is Gabriel Spangs, nice to meet you.
Great. So Gabe, could you tell us a little bit about, you know, in terms of what did you know last year about civics? Compared to now and what you've learned?
So last year, I knew.
Did you just need a little time to just tell us a little?
Yes, sir. So last year, I didn't know too too much. I knew a little bit about government, a little bit of, we talked about the silver war. I didn't know too too much, but then this year is when I started actually getting a lot more into it. And I started learning a lot more about it. It's very, very interesting.
Okay, great. Excellent, that's great, Gabe. So Gabe, could you know, you were a student that I always could count on being engaged and really get into everything. Right from what if last?
Can you repeat that one more time? Sorry, I cut out.
No problem. Gabe, what's been your favorite thing, buddy? What's your favorite thing?
My favorite thing about the class was probably when we went to the EMK Institute. And we learned about more about government and how it worked.
And why? Why did you like that the best?
Because it really gave us a feel on how it was like to be a part of it. And how everything inside actually worked out.
Okay, great. So we're going to let another student in. Yasmin, you just want to mute yourself and we'll be calling on you in a moment. So welcome. Okay, Gabe, virtually, you know, all of you have been very successful. Remote learning has had pros and cons across the United States. For you, Gabe, every week, you know, we're going into the second month. Why have you been successful? Why is remote learning working with the civics curriculum?
I would say it's working because it's teaching us in a way how to try to manage stuff by yourself in a way. I think it gives us like a little bit more. Yeah, like respond.
A little more independence?
Yes.
So Gabe, I'm going to ask the last question kind of as a two parter. Where do you see this program next year? Where do you see it in five years? And are there any additions or suggestions that you would like to make? That'll be your last series of questions.
I would say I could see this like this civic pilot going worldwide and this going far. Because of how interesting and engaging it actually is.
Great. Wow, that's bold, Gabe, worldwide, no pressure there. Okay, so Gabe, thank you so much. And you're going to exit the call and thank you for being first.
Thank you.
All right. We're now going to move to the second student. If Kara, if you could introduce yourself to the school committee, please.
Hi, my name is Kara Bernard.
Excellent, welcome Kara. So Kara, what did you know last year compared to now? What have you learned? And what kind of civic growth do you think you've gone through in, you know, in about a year?
Well, I've always been sort of civically involved, having helped organize the walkouts for like the March for Our Lives campaign for the last couple of years. But I had never actually had a word to go through with that. So I have been civically involved, I just never had a word to properly put that with.
Cool, that's a great answer. That's a great answer. So Kara, again, like Gabe, you are someone that was really always all in and I really appreciate it. What's been your favorite experience this year in the civics program?
I really, really liked all of the speakers, my favorite of which being the Harvard Law students just because of the immersion and like getting to actually work on what it's like to work on like a case like that was just really, really engaging for me.
And did it surprise you, the experience? Is it, did you think it was going to be something and it was something different? Or what did you think of that?
I had no idea what we were going to do going into it. But actually going into it was one of the most immersive civic experience I've ever had in my life. And I really enjoyed it.
Kara, the school committee, I don't think any of them were there. Can you just very briefly just give us a synopsis? What did you guys do with the Harvard students?
We discussed this case that came from, it's called the Tinker case. I don't exactly remember where it happened, but it was to do with.
In Iowa.
In Iowa. Wearing armbands to for like to protest a war. And the school trying to like cut down on that and not letting them do it. So it was a debate on that.
Great, so we had a debate in class, that's fantastic. So virtually Kara, you've also been very, very successful remote learning. Why do you think you've been so successful turning in quality work every single week?
Because I think civics is one of those topics where it's not hard to do unless you are like completely like living under a rock. Because it's literally taking your opinion and just expressing it through different means.
Okay, great. That's a, that's a cool way of saying it. Okay, so Kara, obviously you're all going on to bigger and better things next year. I would love you guys to all come back and do a year two of civics with me, but we can't. So what do you see the future of the civics program at NAMM's? Next five years? You know, what is, what is a prediction? What are some things that you would like to see? And tweaks or changes, little suggestions?
I think this program is amazing. It is one of the most engaging and just intelligent programs I've ever been a part of. And I'm really glad I got to take part of it this year. And I hope it spreads countrywide. And I really, really do hope, like Gabe said, it spreads worldwide. Because I think it could help lots of kids become more active with politics and local politics and anything in their major life. And one tweak I would add is I'd focus more on modern day issues. Because that's what's on all of our minds currently.
Great. Kara, thank you so much. You can leave the call, thanks to your testimony, I appreciate it. Bye bye. Fritz, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, Fritz, so could you please introduce yourself to the school committee?
Hello, I am Fritz Loes.
Okay. Great, Fritz, welcome. So Fritz, just tell us where were you last year compared to now in terms of your knowledge base of civics? What do you know now? What's some growth? What are some things that you've gone through this year for me?
Alright, yeah, so I always thought my family, my family is pretty civically engaged. So I always knew a lot about civics. But I feel like it's just been really nice to have a place to like, like actually like learn things about civics and like use civics in class. I think that's been really cool. I think I've actually like learned a lot this year, which is crazy.
Great, very well said, thank you Fritz. So Fritz, you're all, again, you're all enthusiastic and engaged kids. What was one of your favorite things? It could be the same as your classmates or it could be something different. What's been one of your favorite things this year in the civics program?
Okay, I just really liked the everyday of the class. But I especially liked when we would do like debates in class. I thought that was super fun because you actually got to like talk to people in your class and like debate them. I don't know, I thought it was super fun.
Okay, cool. So you like the debate thing? That's great. We did do a lot of debates, those were fantastic. Fritz, you know, you've been very successful virtually as well. You're getting your assignments and you're turning in great stuff. What's the combination of civics and virtual learning? I mean, I was telling my colleagues maybe a couple of weeks ago, if I was teaching the revolution or some kind of history, I don't think I would have had as much success. I don't know, civics, there's something about it. Why have you been successful over the past two months, Fritz?
Well, I think civics is just like, it's a really fun class to do. And it's like pretty engaging. So like, it may be like a lot to take in, but I feel like it's something you can kind of like power through online. And you can kind of do anywhere. Because I've kind of just been like chugging through, you know?
Cool, thank you very much. And Fritz, I'm going to leave you with the last question. Obviously you're going to high school next year, year two with my new students. What do you see happening, expansion? Where do you see the program in five years? And any additions, tweaks or suggestions moving forward, please?
Alright, so I think the program will probably grow a lot. But I think you guys could implement some sort of like civics convention even. I think that would be really cool. Where like people from the state came around and like, you know, showed off all of their civic progression.
So we have like an all day thing where we shut everything down and come together?
Yeah, like a giant civics convention.
Well, we did have civics day, but of course we didn't have it this year. That hopefully will come back, but I think civics day is going to be a lot more interactive. It's not just, no offense to the speakers, but it's not going to be like just talk, talk, talk. It'll give you all an opportunity to do those things. Okay Fritz, you can leave the call and thank you sir for your testimony.
Alright.
Thank you. Maddie, I know you joined late. Maddie, are you there?
Yep.
Okay Maddie, so could you please introduce yourself to the school committee?
So I'm Madeline Kennedy, but I go by Maddie.
Excellent. So Maddie, if you could just tell us where you were last year in terms of what you knew about civics compared to now? What have you learned? How have you grown? You know, those types of things like your classmates said.
Well, I think that before going into civics, I knew I was pretty civically involved, not a ton. But I knew some stuff and I followed typical like political campaigns. But I think that since going through civics, I learned a lot more about the actual processes that happen in government. And I've been able to learn how to actually well research my opinions and find facts to back them up. And how to debate and discuss with people.
Great, very well said, Maddie. Maddie, what's been your favorite thing this year? You were always all in with everything. I can remember, you know, during all the talks and everything, you always seemed to be into it. What's been your favorite thing?
Well, there's been a lot that I've liked and enjoyed. But I really liked just having discussions or debates and being able to like argue with people and see different sides of issues. And also discussions to find, to put together like all the research that we had done. And be able to make a strong conclusive argument as a group. Because I think that's a big part of civics and I've really enjoyed being able to do that.
Great. Maddie, I was going to ask Fritz this, but I forgot, I'm going to ask you this. Civic discourse, giving both sides the opportunity to speak. Do you feel that that was present in the classroom this year? Do you feel like if you had a minority opinion, you felt respected and you weren't afraid to talk?
Yeah, I think that it was, there was a lot of times where people disagreed. But everyone was able to speak their opinion and everyone was very respectful. And we were all able to listen to each other's different sides.
Great. Maddie, you've also been very successful with the remote learning on Google Classroom. Why has it worked for you in civics? Why have you been so successful with your work every week?
Well, I think that civics is something that kind of affects our everyday life. So it doesn't matter where you are. But you're able to still apply the same concepts to different issues. And also there's so many online resources and the videos you've been doing with speakers. And I think that's made it work really well.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Maddie, I'm going to wrap up with the last question. You know, obviously year two, the future, next five years, additions, tweaks, suggestions. Could you just tell us where do you see the program going in the future? And any changes or suggestions or tweaks that you would like to see?
I think that it's definitely going to be very successful, especially in years to come. Because we'll continue to learn and be able to improve the program. I think that I would like to see a bit more of like debates. Because we did do some debates, but I feel like it's very interesting and engaging and able to make people actually have real experience when we debate issues.
Great, I appreciate that. Okay, so Maddie, you can leave the Google Meet, thank you for your testimony and we'll see you soon, thank you. All right, moving right along, Mr. Sean Francis, are you here, my friend?
Yes, I'm here.
Sean, introduce yourself to the school committee.
Hi, my name is Sean Francis, AP, in Mr. McGravy's civics class. And it was great the whole year.
Great, thank you Sean. So Sean, just out of the box, you know, what did you, you know, you came, I'm going to be honest. You came in the, in the fall, just in some conversations that you and I had after class. You had a knowledge base of history and government. You did know that prior to the class. But as a person who knew about it, do you feel like even though you had a lot of background knowledge? Do you feel like you gained and learned more things? And if so, what are some things that you've learned this year with us?
I definitely, I knew like a broad basis of some topics, right? But I never knew anything like super in depth with certain things. I knew that, I knew certain things, but I, in civics class, we learned everything like in depth. Every single historical event in depth, which was really cool.
Cool, so you knew it generally and you got more specific. Okay Sean, you were very involved with all the great things that we did. What's, what's a favorite of yours this year?
I'd probably say going to the Ted Kennedy Institute was my favorite.
And why did you like that, Sean?
Well, you know, you could have a book that described it all, but it wouldn't be enough to go without going there.
Excellent, very well said Sean. So Sean, obviously you're going to high school next year, I'll be staying at NAMM's with my new students. Where do you see this program in terms of growth in the next five years? Additions, suggestions, a little reflection? What do you think Sean?
I see it, it could go statewide and it'll definitely go statewide, but I think it might go nationwide.
Okay, great. Sean?
I think civic.
Good, I cut you off, continue.
Oh yeah, yeah, I don't think it'll go worldwide. Because you know, like someone, a kid in England doesn't really want to learn about American history and the Revolutionary War.
Okay.
Yeah, no, but it's unique to America, the like civics, like American.
Good. Great, Sean, I appreciate your testimony and have a nice day. Thanks a lot for taking time out of your day to do this, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we're next.
Thank you.
To move to Elise. Elise, I saw you earlier, are you here now?
Hi.
Hi, could you introduce yourself, please?
My name's Elise, I'm on AP, Mr. McGravy's civics class.
Right, and this is Elise Henry, this is Elise Henry, everyone, okay? So Elise, just tell us a little bit about your growth. What did you know last year about civics? What do you know now? What have you learned? Could you take us through what's been going on?
Last year, I really only knew that there were like Democrats and Republicans. And I'd heard the word independence thrown around. But now I definitely know much more and it can be a really controversial topic. But I definitely know a lot more than I did. It's not all just about what side you're on. It's about everything that's happening in the economy and stuff.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you Elise, that was great. So Elise, what was your favorite thing that we did this year and why? And it could be the same or different.
My favorite thing was probably the activity where we were separated into different like groups. There were richer people and then the poorer income people. I really liked that because it was interactive and you got to hear how everyone did in their little life.
And, and school committee, I also want to say, people were talking about debate. Elise and I actually had a debate on how good country music is. And I have not been a country music fan and Elise is. And I will have to say that we definitely, well, I met her halfway. She actually gave me a bunch of country music that I did not know about. So we, we had a pretty cool experience there. Elise, virtually, why is civics working for you on Google Classroom? You're turning in great work.
Personally, I really like being able to voice my opinion virtually, like without anyone hearing me. Because sometimes in class, I feel like if I say something that I really think is true, then other people might not think it's true and they might judge me based on what I say. So virtually, that's a really easy aspect of it, just being able to say what you want.
That's a really good, that's a really good answer, Elise, I like that. Okay, so Elise, as we get to the end of your testimony. Where do you see this civics program in a year, in five years, in the future? Additions, tweaks, suggestions, any kind of feedback you'd like to give me?
I think that this program will definitely go at least statewide. Because it really benefits young minds because they get a sense of what civics is going to be like for them when they're older. And it's definitely, like I said, it's going to go further. And I feel like maybe in five years, you could have us come back or try and get some of us back. And then they, the students then could debate with us, like.
Yes.
I don't know.
Elise, that would be so cool if you guys could come back as seniors or freshmen in college. That's amazing, thanks for leaving with that. And Elise, thanks for your testimony, I appreciate it. See you later. All right, Christian. Christian, could you please introduce yourself to the school committee, my friend?
Yeah, hello, my name is Christian Shidoni.
Great, and Christian, could you tell us a little bit about what you've learned this year? Compared to where you were last year? You know, could you tell us a little bit about your year in civics?
Yeah, so basically coming into this year, I hardly knew anything. Because I didn't really like watch the news or anything like that. But like now that I'm learning about civics, like I've learned so much about, about it. And like, I feel very like engaged with all the activities and talks with like the government officials. And it's probably like the best class I've ever like taken.
Well, thank you, Christian. Christian, I don't mean to embarrass you, but at the beginning of the year, you were definitely a lot more quiet. And I saw it right before we left with the pandemic into virtual learning. You know, you came on the talk show, you're here now. Why do you think you, like, why do you think that happened?
I don't know, I think I was just like really like learning a lot and like wanted to continue learning, I guess.
Cool, that, great, thank you. Christian, what's been your favorite thing this year? What have you really enjoyed?
So everything's been like really cool and amazing. But my favorite was probably the EMK Institute. Just like being a senate for the day and like learning how like you could like pass a bill. Like it's just, you can't beat that, it's really cool.
Great, thank you. And we're going to move to the end of your testimony, Christian. You know, the future of civics, the civics pilot, you know, next year with my new students, five years down the road. Additions, suggestions, tweaks. Could you just give me a little bit of feedback, please?
Yeah, so I think it's going to go very far and be very successful in five years. Possibly across the country, it might be taught.
Great, that's perfect, thank you. That was great. Christian, you can leave and I really appreciate your testimony, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So school committee, we're about at 20 minutes. And so at this point, this might be a good time to possibly stop. The testimony is going to be ongoing because this is going to be a video. North Anniver Cam is going to show everything on TV. All the school committee members will see everything. Dr. Gilligan, Ms. Marks, everyone is going to see everything. It's just, we only have a set amount of time on the agenda. So these people that are going to speak, you will be heard. But school committee, I thought this would be a good point maybe to pause and move on to the rest of your evening with your agenda. Okay, so we're going to have Patricia. Patricia, please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Patricia Boe.
All right, Patricia, last year, this year, compare, you know, where you're at in terms of your civic knowledge. And you know, what have you learned this year, Patricia?
Okay, so a year ago, I'm going to be honest, I learned, I had knew nothing about civics. I didn't even know civics was a thing. Sorry, Mr. McGravy.
So you didn't even know the definition of civics?
I didn't know anything.
All right, that's good, that's good.
But now I kind of, I understand what government is. And I think the reason why we learned civics is to make a change in our environment that we're in. So now that we learned about like the basis of government and how we can make a change.
Cool, I like that, I like that, that was very, very cool. Patricia, what's? Great, so what's been, what's been the favorite thing that you did this year, Patricia?
My favorite thing that we did was the Civics in Action talks. Because I would see these like people who didn't know what they were going to be like at our age, like even in college. And then they did so much change in like what we're going to be in now, like the civics bill. Where like eighth graders at our age are learning about civics. Because people out there want us to. And I think I want to start making a change like that, that's why.
Oh, cool. And Patricia, who was one of your favorite speakers, whether live or virtually?
I think one of my favorite speakers would be Trung Wen.
Trung, Trung the state representative, why did you like Trung? She was on both.
I think it was because like, I don't know why she's my favorite. I think it's just because like seeing so much people.
Yeah, and you found her engaging and she's a very good speaker, she is a really good speaker. So in terms of you, Patricia, you've been very successful with, with Google Classroom and virtual learning. Why? Why have you been so successful this, you know, over the past two months?
I think the reason why I've been so successful is because like even in the beginning, it was very hard for me. I usually like people teaching me like in real life. However, like I kind of realized that everyone's going through these problems. So I have to persevere through it the entire time, so that's why I've been.
I like that, I like that. Okay, great. So the last question I'm going to ask you, Patricia, is where do you see the program next year? The next five years? Do you have any suggestions, tweaks, anything that you'd like to add? Just give me some feedback.
I can see this program like spreading nationwide because it's a very in-depth program about government. However, I want like the, like some of the content that they provide for civics. Like the comics, for example, we want to make it like more understandable towards eighth graders. So using more modern examples, I think would be great.
And what Patricia is alluding to is we had to look at this political cartoon from The New Yorker. And you had to have a doctorate in political science to have to figure it out. And Patricia, I definitely made that crystal clear. Patricia, do you remember the Saturday Night Live skit with Eddie Murphy? So why was Eddie Murphy pretending to be a white man? You know, why was that comedy skit better than the cartoon?
I think it's because we're seeing it in real life, first of all. And you see like how. And you see like how he was treated based on certain things. And we can realize how much different it is now, or maybe it's not as different, because we have to still make that change.
Great. Patricia, thank you for your testimony. I really appreciate it. Have a nice day.
You too.
Okay, so I don't think Dylan is here. No Dylan. Um, so we're gonna move to Jositha. So, Jositha, could you please introduce yourself to the school committee?
Um, hi, my name's Jositha Gopalakrishnan, and I'm a student on eight B.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Jositha. Jositha, last year, this year, her civics, what you've learned, you know, the journey you've taken, what have you learned this year uh, in terms of the civics program?
Um, I honestly learned a lot more in-depth knowledge of government. Cause like before, it'd be like, yes, okay, there are three branches. I only remember one of their names. But now, if you ask me, I could totally go in-depth about what each of them does. And so like, you have so much more detailed knowledge about like every little thing that kids usually wouldn't know about government.
Great. And you talk about knowledge, Jositha, and I think it's an important thing to to point out that I can remember in school, you know, I get the knowledge, I learn the knowledge, I forget the knowledge. Do you, do you think this is gonna stay with you in the future? Like, do you think you'll remember these lessons?
I think I will, cause like it's been presented in an engaging format. And you learned it so young, it kind of just sticks with, it sticks with you in the end.
Good, very well said. Thank you. Um, what's been one of your favorite things that we've done together this year? It could be the same or different from what your classmates have said.
Um, so I actually enjoyed a lot of the things. Uh, for me, it was either having the speakers and the um, EMK Institute. Because the speakers, it's like you're actually interacting with genuine civic agents, and they're like people that are like actually human, like you too. They're not like, okay, we know they exist, but we never talked to them. And going to the EMK Institute kind of made you feel like you were one of them, so you looked at it from a whole new perspective.
So, Jositha, you know, I wanted to ask you, you know, two things. Number one, just by one word, who, you know, who's your favorite speaker? And then secondly, what is your definition of a civic agent? Like, what, what's a civic agent? So, could you tell me your favorite speaker, and then what does civic agent mean?
Um, for favorite speaker, I didn't really have a favorite, because I all like them for many different reasons.
Um, what's a civic agent?
Uh, for me, a civic agent is a person that uses civics in their day-to-day life that makes a difference. And they're like contributing to the community, using government as their like tools.
Great. And so, um, virtually, you know, you've produced some great work as well, uh, like your classmates. Why did virtual learning, remote learning on Google Classroom and civics, why did that combination work for you as a student?
Um, I feel like virtual learning for civics really worked out well for me. Because like, it's kind of like a, it's kind, like civics is built in your day-to-day life, whether or not you realize it. And it's all about getting your opinions and like including things that like you've always known about. So, it's like more freedom for you too, cause you're not put into a structure. So, it really let you put your opinions and what you know and thought into like the work.
Great, excellent. And the last question for you. Thanks for the testimony. Um, where do you see this program next year, in five years, future? Any additions, tweaks, suggestions? What kind of feedback would you give me, please?
Um, so I definitely see this uh, program enter, going statewide, perhaps nationwide, if possible. I feel like it, I, it's definitely like engaging for students, so we definitely have like maybe more kids like growing up. Uh, more people interested in like becoming state representatives and stuff like that. I do wish we could have more field trips involved in the project, like in the thing too, like the EMK, cause that was really neat.
Awesome. Well, great. So, Jositha, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Have a nice day.
You too. Bye.
Alright. So, McKenna, could you introduce yourself to the school committee, please?
Yep. Hi, I'm McKenna Dubey.
Excellent. So, McKenna, um, like, you know, like Sean, I noticed in August and September, you did really have a knowledge base of government and in history. Um, so obviously, you had that background knowledge that some students didn't have. But in terms of for you as a student, um, you know, what have you learned this year? Um, you know, just tell us a little bit about your year.
Okay, so at the beginning of this year, yes, I had like a bit of background, and I knew some history of it. And like, I knew the rough details and stuff, but like this year, we went like more in-depth than what I had gone into. And I really enjoyed like learning more about what I had already skimmed the surface of.
Very well said. Um, so what was your favorite thing that you did this year with us?
Alright, so my favorite thing was definitely the civics in action talks and the Harvard Law students. Because we got to like actually see how their jobs like worked and what they did, instead of just learning this in this classroom and being like, okay, we're sitting here staring at this board, learning this is what they do, but we don't actually have like someone saying, yes, this is what we do. It's like actually interesting. And the debates were always fun, because just
Yeah.
Their case.
Great. Uh, McKenna, if I could ask you, you know, we were, we were lucky enough, I think, to take thirty-five or forty kids to Harvard Law School. Um, moving forward, do you think, how would you think that would work as an all A B? Like, like EMK, like, you know, taking all of us to the law school in Harvard Square. Do you think that would work, or do you think it was better in the smaller capacity?
I think it would work, but I would also say maybe do it over the span of multiple days. Because I enjoyed personally going in a smaller group, because I thought it was more like we got to know more things, and we got to ask the questions we wanted to ask.
Good, that was great feedback. Um, so, McKenna, you've been very successful on the platform of remote learning. You know, your work is quality work. Um, wh- why have you been so successful with in civics class?
Mostly because I really enjoy like expressing my opinion and like showing people like, this is my opinion, and this is why I believe that it's right. And giving the facts of the situation.
Sure, sure.
And civics online is just putting what you'd say on a computer, basically.
Okay. Cool, that's a good analogy. Putting what you say onto the computer, that's great. Um, okay, so I'm gonna leave you with the last question. Year two, future. Uh, you do have a, a, a sixth grade sister that's gonna be going into the seventh grade, so she may be a future uh, civics pilator as well. You know, how do you see the program changing, growing, um, you know, and obviously, you know, you're a very reflective person. You've always given us some, you know, you've given me some really cool suggestions to make the class better, and I always appreciate it. Um, could you just touch upon the future of the program and some feedback, please?
Alright, so I enjoy it as it is now, but I think that there could be a lot more of like the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and like a lot less of what we did at the beginning of the year. Because I found the Constitution stuff a lot more like interesting and engaging personally.
Right.
And I also think that we could have like maybe more debates in class, um, and maybe you could have Harvard Law come back next year. Like, I don't know if that would happen, but.
Oh, yeah, hopefully they could. And McKenna, I'm really glad you gave me that feedback, because actually, you know, moving forward, I'm gonna be working at Harvard this summer and and tweaking things. Unit one is going to be cut down a lot. And the Constitution and the Bill of Rights is actually going to be increased. So, when and if I do have your sister in eighth grade, uh, those changes that you thought of will be in place. So, McKenna, thanks for your testimony. That was great. Thank you.
Okay. Bye.
Alright, so the next student that we're gonna have, and I don't mean to embarrass her, but uh, Erica, first of all, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Erica Parks.
Okay, so Erica has got a unique situation, and I didn't tell her this ahead of time. Erica, do you feel comfortable talking about how you entered the, the team late? Do you, are you okay with talking about that? Okay, so, so school committee, um, superintendent, Erica was um, in a program for acting, and so she didn't come to A B until January. So, uh, that's an important thing. So, Erica, if you don't mind, since we've heard so much about number one, I wanna ask you, um, how was it entering civics in January? You know, coming into math, coming into foreign language, it might be kind of stressful, but but you, no, how, how did the transition go for you?
Well, to be honest, I didn't really know to expect. So, coming in, everyone was just so welcoming, and luckily I had a broad knowledge of civics coming in, so it was very welcoming, and I feel like I did learn a lot over the course of a couple months that I was there.
Great, so.
And while I was online schooling, we had a, we were still doing American history. So, we, we were learning about like American Revolution, War of eighteen twelve, so coming in, it was like completely different curriculum program.
So, Erica, I've taught US history just last year, and now I've taught civics. I'm not gonna sway anyone's opinion and tell you which one I like better. But for you, you know, learning history compared to learning the civics, um, how are they different? Which way do you, which one do you like better? Could you comment on that?
I feel I like, they're both very different, yet similar. I feel I like learning about civics a little bit better, because it's connected to modern day time, where we were learning about things like the hun, that happened like a hundred, two hundred, three hundred years ago. So, connecting these things that we're learning about to modern day time is much more fun, in my opinion.
Great. So, Erica, you did come late, but you did get some civics in action talks. You did get to go to EMK. Um, tell us a little bit about what was your favorite thing, Erica?
I loved all the civics in action talks, cause it was really fun to hear everyone's personal experiences, not just oh, people can do this. It was really fun to hear people who like grew up in North Andover, their experience with civics.
Great. Um, Erica, we did, I know, a few people have mentioned the virtual civics action talks, where I take things with just me, and while they're not as good as live, on Monday, when you would watch the civics in action and talks, um, how like, as opposed to reading an article or, I don't know, did you find them helpful, or what, what did you think of the virtual talks?
I did enjoy them. I found them very helpful, cause we get to learn about some of the same issues that we could read read from a textbook, or read an article, or watch a video. But it was really fun to hear, again, people's personal experiences and how this can connect to everyday lives.
Great. So, you kind of touched upon the virtual question for me, so I'm gonna move to the last question. You know, where do you see this in the future, next year, five years? Um, and any suggestions or additions, some reflections, some feedback you wanna give me?
I definitely see this program going statewide, possibly nationwide, because it's so relatable to many kids across the country and across the region, and I feel like it's very important for kids to learn.
Great. Erica, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Yasmin, you've been very, very patient. You've been very, very patient. Could you please introduce yourself as the second to last speaker?
Hi, I'm Yasmin Mashkor.
Great. Yasmin, please tell us last year, this year, uh, what did you know then? What do you know now? What have you learned this year in civics class?
Well, last year, like Patricia, I didn't really know much. I kind of just knew about the two parties. And like the main presidential like candidates, and that's basically it. But now, like, it's, I feel like so much more civically engaged. It's crazy, cause I know how stuff actually works. Like, I know how a bill becomes a law, and how campaigns work, and all of this crazy stuff. Like, I never imagined. I don't think I would have learned it if it wasn't for this class, to be honest.
Great. And so you obviously, you like learning about it. It's something that you enjoyed. Great.
Yeah.
Um, so what was, what was your favorite, one of the favorite things, you know, you, you were uh, you are um, in my uh, eighty-sixth class, which was always a very, you know, all the classes were great. Um, but I'm glad, you know, we have some eighty-six people represented here. It was always a lively, upbeat experience. Um, so what was one of your favorite things that we did in class or, you know, out, out of class?
Um, whenever we did any group work, um, I really liked that, because we could talk about like, we didn't have to voice our opinions to the entire class, but it was kind of like to a smaller group. And people were understanding, and they weren't really judgy at all. And I liked still doing the voicing of your opinion without it being as scary.
Great. Okay, excellent. Wow, so, uh, gotcha, gotcha. Um, so virtually, obviously, you've had a great two months. Um, why is civics working for you on Google Classroom and remote learning?
I think that whenever we had class in person, um, it was kind of hard for me to like write. Cause I don't really like writing on paper as much. It's just like with, and then we have so much more time to work on it too. I feel like I get a lot of time to think about what I wanna say. And I have, I can write as much as I want, or as much as I need, without it being.
Excellent. Um, so, obviously, we're moving into year two, which is the future. Um, thinking about next year with my new students, thinking about five years down the road. Where do you see this pro, program going? And um, any additions, suggestion, tweaks? I know you like the group work aspect. That might be weaved in more. Could you give me a little feedback, please?
Um, definitely, I see it going statewide. Nationwide, if it's not in five years, then later, because I think that would be great for our country and stuff. And
Great.
Maybe, maybe even going to like lower grades, because if Andy Vargas's bill like goes through and sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can vote, then I think we should move it to like seventh grade and stuff, because I feel like we should know more about it earlier on, so we can have time to learn.
You mentioned Representative Vargas's bill. Obviously, he created the civics bill that the school committee might know. Um, but in your own words, based on the virtual learning lesson, wh- wh- what is, what is State Representative uh, Vargas's bill? What, what does he want?
In local town and city elections, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds would have the right to vote.
And what was your opinion? Cause you had to do an editorial piece on that, Yasmin. Yours was very, very good. Um, what's your opinion?
Um, I think that sixteen and seventeen-year-olds should definitely be able to vote, because with what's going on today, and with local elections as well, we're, it's in the hands of like our future, like that's, we should be able to vote on what happens in our towns. We should be able to have a say in our community.
Great. Yasmin, that's a great way to end. Thank you for being so patient and waiting to be second to last. Have a nice day. Thank you so much, Yasmin. And, Victoria, you are the last person to testify. Could you please introduce yourself to the class, I mean, to the school committees, sorry?
Hi, my name is Victoria Bergamo.
And could you please tell me, what have you learned this year? Um, tell us a little bit about your growth?
Okay, so before starting the school, I would say that I had an extensive knowledge of like the politics that went on at the federal level, but like not really anything uh, about the state or local level. So, I feel that by like doing this class and having all the experiences, it's really taught about what we can do since we're younger, how we can like participate and help encourage our representatives. It's a much better for us.
Great. Uh, Victoria, thank you so much for bringing that up, because the, you know, the new uh, eighth grade civics frameworks require federal, state, and local, and I think federal is the one that it kind of rules, and state and local are definitely things that have been kind of blown off through the years. So, thank you for bringing that up. Um, Victoria, I could always count on you to get into what we were doing. You know, teachers always wish they have kids like you in class. Um, what was your favorite? What was one of your favorite things that you did that you experienced?
One of my favorite experiences was definitely the Edward M. Kennedy Institute, as it allowed us to apply all of the knowledge we gained about creating a bill to a real-life example of an ongoing conflict. It allowed us to create polite debate, and it really forced us to create compromises to the point where we were able to create an immigration bill.
Great, excellent. Um, so, can you just tell me a little bit about your experience virtually uh, on um, Google Classroom and remotely? You know, you, you're, you're cranking out work every week. You're turning in the four lessons a week. It's been quality stuff. Wh- why has that been successful for you?
I feel that for me, it has personally been, been successful, since by having it spread out over the week. And it gives us the responsibility and provides us autonomy to like sort of do it at our own pace in a form where we can like get out the best quality as possible. Um, instead of just writing it out like really quickly in class, then hoping you remember, even when in class. Well.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Um, so we're gonna end with the same last question that we've got. You'll be the last person to chime in on this. Where do you, I, I, you have a little sister, correct?
Yes.
Is she going into seventh grade?
Yes.
So, you have a sister. So, if your sister was in the pilot, I think it would be the year three of the pilot, how do you think, where do you see it for her? how do you think, where do you see it for her, where do you see it in five years? Um, and what, what are some additions, tweaks, or suggestions or feedback you could give me?
I feel that the program will continue to be successful, and in like five years or ten years, I feel like it would have done a lot to create habitual voters and amazing members of society, as we will be like the future activists for our generation, and we'll know how to like solve these conflicts and probably inspire a better democracy.
Great. Victoria, thank you so much for testifying, have a nice day. So, um, obviously, uh the, I think of something my grandparents used to say out of the mouths of babes, uh. I don't think I could say anything better than what those kids said. Um, they, they were just amazing, they did such a great job. And I really think if you want to know what the civics pilot is, um, that testimony right there is going to tell you. Those kids come from completely different backgrounds. They come from completely different learning levels, whatever you wanna call it, I don't know, demographics. Um, this program works for any kid. And we always hear, all kids can learn. That is not just a saying, that is a reality. All kids can learn and uh they have learned. And I really appreciate the school committee allowing me the opportunity to allow the kids to speak and tell you about their year. Um, whether you watch ten minutes or all of this, um, you know, I'm gonna cherish this video, it's just amazing. And I will take your questions and I appreciate the opportunity, thanks.